I'm waiting for the signing sheets, so. Frank, it's supposed to be bringing them up. It is six o'clock, but if you'll give us a grace period of a couple of seconds, we're waiting for the signing sheets to come forward. Thank you, that does help. Appreciate it, thanks. I put them in order. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is now time to call the May meeting of the Bullock County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'd like to welcome any media that's here, and I always, as always, would like to thank the Deputy Sheriff for being here to help us keep order. Thank you, Jody. If you have your cellphone, would you please turn it to silent for the benefit of all who are in here, so that we can conduct business without interruption? We will begin our meeting tonight with an invocation from Mr. Charles Chandler.
Father God, we do thank you for this country we live in and this state and this community. We thank you for the blessings you poured out upon us. We thank you for the rain today and protection from the storms. We pray for those who have been devastated by storms throughout our country, and pray, Father, that you would be with them in a special way. We pray for this commission and for those pending that all we do and say would be what's right and just and bring honor and glory to you. In Jesus' name, amen. We stand and pledge allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin this meeting with the approval or amendment of the minutes from the last meeting.
Forty-five.
Got a motion to approve, Mr. Chandler? A second for Ms. Tremble? All those in favor? The minutes are approved as written. We have seven items on the zoning agenda tonight, and just to do a little bit of housekeeping, it is a policy of the county commissioners and this commission, planning and zoning, that we give each agenda item 10 minutes per side. So if you'll see, we have a clock up there to my left, your right, and that'll keep them a touch of all the minutes left. So if there are five or six people signed up to speak for or against an item, just remember there may be somebody behind you that may want to talk too. And we do want to hear from everybody with pertinent information. All right, item number one. J.C. Burke Properties LLC has applied for a variance to reduce a 30-foot setback to four points, four feet, six inches. The property is located at 302 North Randy Lowery Road, and Mr. Larry Davison will be serving as agent. Patrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The current zoning for this location, approved to North Lowery Road, is heavy industrial. It's approximately one acre. The party wishes to plan or place a second unit on the property for office staff. However, it would require a 30-foot setback off the adjacent property line. However, he's requesting a variance to that, which is about an 83.3% reduction in setback in a heavy industrial environment. Staff feels that with that being so close, it may cause some issues later with the fire safety of the adjacent properties. So we, as the staff, recommend denial of the variance pursuant to Section 8 of 6 of the Development Standards of Bullock County Zoning Works. The property is located at 301 in our employment district. Above, you'll see a photo in the heavy industrial park. He's highlighted in blue. Surrounding properties are light industrial. There is some Ag-5 and some R-80. This is an overhead picture. This is the proposed diagram that was submitted to us. Notice on the bottom-left corner of that, that has been bought down to about four foot, six inches. This is a photo of the modular unit that they wish to place in that location. This is looking back towards 301 on Randy Lowery Road. And that's what, oh, we have now.
Mr. Davison, if you'll come forward. Is Mr. Davison here?
Thank you. I thank you and the, thanks to commission and everyone who's been involved. The circumstances that kind of brought this about is that J.C.J. Properties bought this, bought this property to expand their trucking business. Okay? And it's been a little up and down, but they're seeing some growth. And the existing office that's out there is not enough to take care of all their staff. Plus, they have staff that is located on another site in Statesboro. That property that they're renting now has just been purchased, and their rent has gone up by 1.5%. So that's one of the, one of the purposes for trying to get everybody moved out here to one place. We were aware that we were going to be infringing on the setback. And since there is, if that could show the aerial photo again, the property to the left is agricultural. There's, there's nothing on that property at this time. And that since these offices are going to be temporary is the purpose for asking for this variance.
Can you tell us how temporary you're thinking it might be?
Well, I, I don't know how long that you could put a term on temporary. The, the owner is presently talking with the property owner that owns that property that is adjacent to it about possible purchase, so that we could extend this property and put it back in compliance.
And is there no other area you could locate an office?
Well, not and utilize what's already on the site. If we go back to the, the plan, that, we're actually putting a passageway between these two facilities, so that it actually becomes one, one office. And that was the, that was the, the purpose behind it.
Are there any questions for Mr. Davidson from this commission?
How far is it off the building? I can't read the small print. On the side that says new temporary office.
And that, that's where the four point, four foot?
I'm, I'm out from the building to the trailer.
Between the two? Between the two?
Yeah. You know that maybe?
I do have the plan. And if you'll, if you'll show me where I can.
It looks like three and a half feet. I see why it's there. Right here, when you set up the building right there, how far is that?
How far? Oh, that side, it's right, right at four feet. And basically, what that is, is access to the electrical and the HVACC that is on the existing temporary office. And we need, we need service and that access to that.
Couldn't go on the side of the existing temporary office. Didn't go in here, on this side right here?
It, it could, but it would take up the parking space that we need for the parks.
They had to park around where you put it.
We do have someone who would like to speak up, Mr. Davidson, so if we can hear from Mr. Terry Deal, then you can come back forward if there's some questions you may be able to answer for him.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Terry Deal.
Good evening. My name's Terry Deal. I've lived on Redfern Lane for probably over 30 years, and I own the property next door that they're coming into. And, you know, I'm all for people doing what they want to do on their own land. I've always kind of felt that. I've watched that place out there change from an empty field and businesses that took care of their property to now it's pretty much dilapidated. If you go to Google Earth and if you did a little man that walks down the street, you would see the changes just in the last five years. Rackliff Trucking was there at one time, and, and he kept it really clean. Of course, you know, had transfer trucks come in and out, but that's just part of the way things are. Right now, it's changed a lot out there. And that particular property is really cluttered. Cars just all out on the fence, and if you go back to some of those photos, you'll see where they took some of the pictures. I haven't been in any discussion with anybody about selling the property, so, I mean, I don't think that's a new one on me. My biggest concern is that, you know, even that building that's sitting there, that's an office building now, probably 10, 12 years ago, that was supposed to be a temporary build. And it doesn't really offend me, that building, that, I mean, it's kind of, kind of neat. So I just let it be temporary for a decade. You know, what we're looking at there is four foot between his trailer he's putting in there and the property line. And, I mean, outside, you could even get, if you had some kind of fire or something, I don't know how you'd even get anything in there. There's nothing particular about that particular property there that's caused this issue. I mean, it's, it's actually larger in shape, it's not irregular shape, and any kind of medical condition is causing this request. It's pretty much all due to his choices and, you know, they're bringing in additional business beyond the trucking company is really what's happening there, and the reason they need extra spaces, some kind of alliances, they do underground piping or something. So they're bringing in other businesses in there that are maybe family members, and so.
Excuse me, Mr. Deal, could we bring it back to the sketch so we can see? There, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Anyway, it's, it's, it's right there. When you look at four foot, I mean, we're looking at this far. I mean, that's how close we're getting there. And so, well, I'm for people's property rights and doing what they want, and I'm all about people making money, doing business and everything. I'm a businessman, and I just feel like it's, the place is run down. If you look at the trailer there, you can see it. I talked to him about it. I actually initiated a call. That's not Mrs. Larry, trying to find out what their intentions were with the building and everything, and he said that they were just going to paint the exterior, they wanted to try blending it in, I guess. And on the way here today, I got a call from the guy that owns the business, and a very nice guy, I mean, but it's not honest with you. I don't have much faith in what people say outside of a piece of documents, you know? I'm against it. I feel like it's going to cause problems for us, and in fact, it's already caused them problems. If you go down to our property and look at ours, the way it looks, it's neat and everything, but that's just a junk hole there, along with some other ones out there. So with that being said, you know, being unattractive and intrusive, and I can't really see anything other than what they're making. It's their business decisions, but it's not anything unique to that property. And so I'm against it. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Deal. Are there any questions for Mr. Deal?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davidson, if you'd like to say something else, you've got about five minutes left that you can say something. Mr. Patton, is there a way that, that whatever this board decides, that he can come back and work with your department to work something out?
Yes, ma'am. Our recommendation would be to switch sides, obviously, but again, as you've heard him state, that has to take up some of the parking. To clarify, the life above him is not agriculture, it is also heavy industrial, and that's one of our biggest concerns, is we don't know what's going in there, or could possibly go in there, with it being a heavy industrial. And the property that you see in yellow above it is no longer R-80, that is a light industrial park now as well. So with everything being the industrial-type zoning setbacks, you know, there obviously for fire reasons. We could, again, try to work with you to some attachment, but there were also concerns as far as the separation of those modular units and fire separation and the whole different thing that comes into play.
Madam Chair, could I ask Mr. Patton a couple of questions, please? What, what speci-, excuse me, what specific type of business is it?
It is a trucking business.
What kind of trucking?
Freight trucking, is my understanding.
Okay. And this, there's a building already there that's been placed, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's a modular building?
Yes, sir, it is.
There are actually two buildings. You've got a metal building, and then you've got a modular office that was temporary, which is the lighter panel, and then you've got the other one, which is there wanting to attack.
Okay, but that's, as we say in the nomenclature, that's not a stick-built structure, right? But is it modular in the sense of the Georgia Industrial Building Codes? Or is it more of a, like a mobile home or something you'd see with a temporary classroom at a, at a school?
To, to answer that without going inside and actually looking at the sticker that's in the panel, it would be hard for me to say. We were told it was a modular unit. Without a building official actually going in and checking things, I wouldn't be able to give you an honest answer.
Well, have we, have we evaluated this with Section 1423, with the supplemental standards for freight trucking facilities? Because I, I think, I think we got to get, get down to the level of what kind of, you know, trucking facility is it or freight facility? Because that's going to drive the traffic that goes in and out of it, the circulation, and what actually needs to be used. It does appear the applicant doesn't have any kind of sketch of how internal traffic circulation's going to work, which would otherwise justify the need for, for the variance. So, and then, like you were talking about, Madam Chairman, or for that matter, the applicant, I think it would be important to define temporary, because temporary can become permanent. So I, I think there might be a few holes in this thing before you maybe make a decision to give the applicant an opportunity to do a rework, either with the staff, make sure, and, and, you know, it may not even be a variance thing. He, depending upon how this is done and how the standards have to be followed, it gets down to exactly what kind of trucking business is it? And then we got to apply it to our standards. Measure twice, cut once. And I, I think we just have an absence of information here. But, you know, at this point, with the amount of land that's available on the parcel, I don't know why, why it's so necessary to make that modular building work at a four-foot setback when we, when we don't know how the traffic circulates on the lot. I, I think some of those questions have to be answered by, by the applicant, whether it's, whether it's this evening, or if he wants to improve upon the variance application or do something else.
Mr. Davidson, would you like to come back forward?
To address one of the questions that you brought up, one of the things that, that probably needs clarifying is there's, this facility, this lot, is basically used to, to store trucks that are not on the road and to do maintenance on those trucks. Now, there, there are tractors and trailers on that lot, and that's basically why he purchased the lot, to be able to expand where he would be able to, to locate those. And, you know, and, and we would be, we would be open to, you know, any other, any other approaches that, that you, that we might be able to, to address as far as, you know, trying to move it to another location and still stay within code.
And the reality is, is I'm look, as I'm looking at Section 420, 1423, which is a new section, and it sounds as if what Mr. Davidson is facility, is describing as a freight trucking facility, and, you know, there's a kind of a menu of different kinds of trucking uses that, that's within, that's within that section. I don't know if I'd be, if I, if I would make the recommendation that he withdraws and res submits in, in another way, or, or if we defer it. But the more I, I look at it, depending upon, you know, what you, what you want to do permanently, I don't know if you're going to meet the standards of the ordinance with what you're suggesting. So I think we have to review it against Section 1420, 23. And, and the variance, you gotta, when you say temporary, how long is temporary? I think you have, I think you have to create some certainty with that, no matter if it's four feet away from the line or 50 feet away from the line.
If this board so decides, would you be open to deferring it, so we've got some time to, to answer some of these questions?
Certainly.
And then, there's a possibility you may withdraw and it comes back in a different way. Know what I mean?
Correct.
Are there questions from this board, or is there?
I'm not motioning.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Got a second? Is there any other questions? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of deferring? All opposed? We're going to ask to defer until next month, or sometime in the future, we'll answer some of these questions and get a definite answer.
Okay.
Sir.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda. Jerry and Craig Jennings have submitted an application to rezon approximately 2.66 acres from Ag-5, which is agricultural five acres, to highway commercial. The property is located on Highway 301 North. Mr. Patton?
Yes, ma'am. This property, again, is out 301, not too far from the last property we were just discussing. It is across from Eagle Village. It is owned by Mr. Jennings and his son, Craig Jennings. This property is, our understanding, it will eventually be developed into a three-unit, 1,500-square-foot strip mall. And that's it, ma'am.
All right, and I think Mr. Jerry Jennings will be acting as agent tonight.
Just here. Answer any questions?
All right, questions from Mr. Jennings, from this board? If there are none, I see that the county has recommended approval of the rezon request. So therefore, do we have a motion, a recommendation? We have a motion to approve from Mr. Lane. Is there a second? Ms. Reiner? All those in favor? We will recommend approval to the county commissioners on May, on June the 4th, 5:30 in this room. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Item number three. Alex Hunter Johnson applied for a conditional use to allow for a home occupation cottage industry. The property is located at 100 Gottino Lane. Stephen T. Rushing will be acting as agent. Mr. Patton?
Yes, ma'am. This is a 14.77-acre lot. Again, this is a conditional use for a home occupation and cottage industry. The staff was neutral in its review of this. This is out 25 north. If it is approved, we just point out that the operating hours would be 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and that it would need to comply with Section 1425 of the Home Occupation Cottage Industry Standards.
All right, with that being said, Mr. Stephen T. Rushing will be acting as agent.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I am Steve Rushing. I'm an attorney with Talby Rushing Snipes, Marshand Hodgins. And tonight, I am representing the owner of the properties, Mr. Alex Hunter Johnson. He's, can't miss him, right here in the middle front. His lovely wife next to him is Jessie, and his father, Kevin. Mr. Hunter Johnson owns this property, it is 14.99 acres, and yes, it is accessible by Gottino Lane, which is a 40-foot-wide private easement. As you perhaps read in his letter of intent, very little business activity actually occurs on the site. It is principally a storage facility for the materials and equipment that he uses in his business, and it is a meeting place for he and his employees, usually on Monday morning before they head out to the various jobs that they undertake. Most of those jobs are not only out of the county, generally, they are even out of the state. The type of business is a communication- The type business is a communications contracting business, which installs fiber optic networks for apartment complexes. So, the actual installations are, are taking place at the various apartment complexes, uh, who have contracted with Mr. Johnson for his services. No customers ever come back. In fact, they don't even know where his place is. Um, the only folks that do come back there are his employees, and he's got five of them. They come Monday morning before they head out of town, and they come back on Fridays and bring back any leftover materials. And they start over again the next Monday. As far as the storage, um, pretty much everything is kept inside of his storage building, except the rolls of fiber optic cable. They're on a reel, and, uh, they are outside, but they are certainly not visible, as you can see, from any road. Uh, there's plenty of woods, uh, and protection, uh, so that those materials that are actually outside, those reels, uh, are not visible. He does not even, uh, receive, um, his materials from his suppliers at that location, mainly because they're out working and there's no one there to receive them during the day. So, what he, uh, he does, he has his material sent to his dad's place in, in Metter, and then they periodically, uh, will go pick it up as they need it, and they use their regular-size pickup trucks with a trailer to bring that in there. Now, though the easement is forty-foot wide, uh, the actual lane or accessway, um, is maybe only twenty-foot wide, so, well, if it means got no room lane, but it is not quite enough room, uh, for his, um, travel trailer. There is room for his truck and his trailer that he drives in there for his business, uh, but the travel trailer, he has had issues getting in there, because he lives back there, too. This is his home, and, uh, so he is in the process of widening it in certain places where he has to turn and not damage his travel trailer. He's already damaged it a couple of times. But, uh, the reason he's widening it is for his travel trailer. Now, you'll hear from, uh, the neighbor tonight, um, but, uh, it's not for his business. It's just, I guess, coincidental, far as the timing is concerned.
So, you just said he's living, it's, it's his temporary home right now, the travel trailer's where he's living?
No, 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 no. He just parks it back there. He does live in his house back there, but he does have to get it back there to, to park it. Now, we do look at section fourteen twenty-five of the zoning ordinance. Uh, all of the elements of a home occupation cottage industry are met by Mr. Johnson's business, including he has fewer than six employees, his lot size is way more than eighty-thousand square feet, low level of traffic, I just described that, um, because it's just himself and his employees, no customers, um, not even su, uh, suppliers. Uh, the county staff, I think, did a good job assessing these provisions from fourteen twenty-five in their staff report. And, and not to contradict Mr. Patton, but, uh, uh, the recommendation section of the staff report, it concluded that the subject property appears suitable for the proposed use. Uh, Mr. Johnson, who controls all of those deliveries from his dad's place to his site, uh, fully accepts the condition that the staff has suggested, that those deliveries of his materials take place only between eight AM and six PM. That would be his intention, anyway. So, on behalf of Mr. Johnson, who is the owner of the property, and he is the applicant for this conditional use, we respectfully request that you recommend to the Board of Commissioners at their meeting next month, uh, that this application, uh, be approved for a home occupation cottage industry in the form of a fiber optic communications business. We'll reserve the rest of our time, please.
All right, there are several people signed up to speak.
All right, thank you.
So, we will, um, hear you back in shortly. In opposition, we have, first item is Mr. Larry Roberts. No, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. No, I'm sorry. Ellen Bunch, I'm sorry. Ellen Bunch? Uh, yeah, okay. Claire Wright?
I'm Maury, she'll speak to me.
All right, then, Mr. Jackson, you are actually signed up to speak next, for, so I would be going to ask, if he's for it, do we use the timer for Mr. Rushing has left, or do we use that as part of the?
Yeah, um, I just asked Hunter to sign up in case you have questions of him. We wanted him to be able to speak. Uh, I don't think he has anything to add right now.
Okay.
Unless you have questions.
Natalie Newsom?
I'm deferring to our lawyer.
All right, well, then, Mr. Michael Klassens?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members. I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Wright in opposition to this. Ms. Wright is the lady who sold this property to the gentleman. It's her own part of her old home place. She grew up, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, uh, this is the mom and dad's house that's on this piece of property that he bought two thousand eighteen, I believe. And, uh, at the time, young fellow's coming out there, gonna raise his family, live out there, great. That's what all these folks are doing out in Ag five areas. And, over the course of time, Ms. Wright noticed some traffic going on, uh, found out that he's doing some renovations in the house and so forth, so fine. Turns out, uh, what he was doing aside, or in addition to those renovations, was building some buildings out there that have been added. And again, I haven't been out on the property to examine the buildings, but it's my impression, based on what research I've done, that there were no permits, nothing done in advance to approve those things. Maybe you don't have to do that. But ultimately, she discovers that he's operating this, uh, fiber optic installation business out there, and the traffic's going back and forth and back and forth. I understand that some of the trucks that come in drive through Ms. Bunch's yard because they can't make the turn up the entrance, uh, to the lane there, the easement. And we're not here to talk about the easement. That's gonna be a separate issue in a separate forum. This is about allowing this cottage use in an area where, according to the county ordinance, the specific intent of the Ag five zoning is to protect land from encroachment by commercial development. That's a quote from Article five, Section five hundred. Section five oh one goes on to say that Ag five zoning districts are free from uses which are incompatible with agricultural and residential uses. This use is incompatible with that. A conditional use, according to the definitions in Section two oh two, is a use that may cause harmful or undesirable effects on surrounding or nearby properties, but which would promote the general welfare. We've got a petition here, it's signed by ten or twelve of the folks who own the nearby properties, all in opposition to this. And I didn't know how many folks we were gonna have. I'll be happy to enter one into the record, and y'all can share it. Uh, but each person's name and address is on here. They all are out in the area. And they oppose the grant of this request because of the increased traffic, and the fact that this is a commercial business going on back there, that they're not consistent with residential use, and they're not, certainly not being used for agricultural purposes. On top of everything else, and I'll leave the rest of the petition to speak for itself, in two thousand nineteen, Mr. Johnson signed one of these land use agreements, a ten-year agreement that gives you a tax break. And he agreed that he would meet the requirements. Operating a fiber optic installation business on property subject to one of those ten-year land agreements is a breach of those covenants. He's enjoyed property tax and state income tax benefits on account of having entered into that covenant in two thousand nineteen. For the length of time that he's been operating this business, he's been in violation of that covenant. Likewise, Ms. Wright signed such a covenant in the past. She has lived up to the things that she said she would do in her agreement. She has not altered the character. She's not engaging in uses not permitted under that covenant. That's a problem. It's not a problem necessarily for this board, but it's something to bear in mind, that he's already violating Ag five zoning, and he's violating the terms of that covenant through which he has realized a significant financial benefit since two thousand nineteen on two levels, local regarding property taxes, and at least potentially, uh, depending on what his accountant has done, on the state, you get a tax credit on your state income tax on account of being involved in those things. So, a cottage industry is described as one which is less in scale. This is also in the Section two oh two definitions, than what would be required if it were located in a commercial or industrial district. I'd suggest to you that a fiber optic installation business with five or six employees, if you include Mr. Johnson, who each drive vehicles back and forth to work, is no different than any of the other places, like Hard Gray or Bullock Telephone, which are in commercial districts, not residential, not Ag five. These folks moved out to this area expressly not to have to put up with commercial activity. The county assured them with the zoning regulations that that would remain the case. In some cases, such as this one, Mr. Johnson signed a separate agreement that, if you give me a break on taxes, I'll restrict my own usage of this property, at least for the next ten years. The ordinances are meant to protect against this kind of activity. The limitation on business activity doesn't really stop the traffic. These are dirt roads out there, and you know how we in Bullock County feel about our dirt roads, uh, except when it's raining, we love them. And, other than today, I guess it's been pretty good for the last month or so, but, they don't want the kind of increased traffic that has caused the washboard effect, because they're gonna call y'all, call the county, and say, "Come out here, run the backhoe, the scraper up and down this road." It's gonna be over and over and over again. Uh, the fact of the matter is, the man's already said, "I'm not gonna do this if you give me the tax break," these kind of things that are prohibited in the covenant, and he's done them anyway. Every property owner says, "If I'm gonna put buildings on my property, I'll follow the rules. I'll come to you and ask, file a request for a building permit." He hasn't done that. Ms. Wright expected that this young couple was gonna come out there and live out in the country, just like she did, and raise their family, just like she was raised by hers. Nice pond, woods, trees. And instead, he's building a commercial enterprise out there. And with that comes some increase in traffic, and it is more than what is ordinarily associated with residential activity. That is why she and virtually all of the surrounding community are against this. I'm unfamiliar with the exact protocol to place this in the record. How may I do that?
Venus White, she'll take care of it. Thank you.
And a positive one, oh, good lord, I've got a minute and a half left. Uh, I'm not gonna use it. I just ask you all to please honor the wishes of Ms. Wright, the other folks who signed up to speak in opposition, the folks there. If you know this area, uh, you go out, highway almost to the Jenkins County line, take a right on Ponderose Road, and then there it is, right there. Uh, this is out in the country. They like it like that. They want it to stay like that, and they don't want the trucks and the other traffic coming in and out, in and out, wearing out the roads, and interrupting the way of life that they all expected to enjoy when they moved out there.
I, I have a question for you, sir. If you would mind, come back up here.
If you'll stop the sound, because there's more.
Not at all.
This is just kinda, I'm not a lawyer, um, so I'm not gonna get into the details of the code or anything. But I would, I'm, I'm a farmer, and, I mean, we have a, we farm a pretty fair amount of land, and we have a big headquarters in our shop. And it meets better than a house or anything else, the definition of Ag five, because we're, we're farm. Um, our shop, when we're working around there, my high boy goes in and out of our driveway about probably twenty times a day. You know, we absolutely destroy all of the dirt roads that we operate on, meeting the definition of Ag five. We make, on, from, on, during busy time of the year, a lot of times on Saturday mornings at seven o'clock, we got a pressure washer running. Uh, we don't have any close by neighbors. They're probably glad they don't live there, because it's very loud, very noisy, very dusty. Probably not nearly as impactful. That'd be probably a lot more impactful on somebody's actual way of life, living there, than, than this would be. And I'm just, you know, we, we talk a lot up here about the spirit of the ordinance, and not just the letter of it. And, you know, so, there is that. If you're in Ag five, you're liable to be encountering a lot more impacts than, you know, four or five trucks up the driveway, two or three times a week. I'm just, you know, I'm just kinda looking at it from a realistic angle and not a legalistic one, if that makes sense.
Well, that, and, but that's what you expect when you are in an area zone agriculture five. You expect the ordinary activities incident to the agricultural industry to occur. You, whether they're intrusive or not, and you've made the distinction, you don't have any neighbors, the roads that you're tearing up are on your property, I'm guessing. Okay, well, then the county comes out there and fixes them, or you do, with the equipment, but it's a different thing. You don't have somebody living right next door who sold you a home. You've had your farming operation out there. You may have your home on the property. I think you said you did. But if you sold that home to somebody with the intention that they were gonna live there, raise their family there, and enjoy the country, and then they did this, I suspect you might feel differently about it. Uh, and that's the situation here. This, there was never a farming operation going on here. Uh, Ms. Wright owned fifty or so acres, and she sold, uh, nearly fifteen of them to this gentleman with the house and a pond on, for him to live there, not to operate a farm, not to operate a business, but to live there with his family. That was the intention. That's consistent with both the spirit and the letter of the Ag five regulations, which say very specifically, the specific intent of these regulations is to protect these folks from encroachment by commercial activity, not agricultural, other commercial activity. And that's what this is.
Thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Murray, uh, you've got fifty seconds since seven, second, fifty-seven seconds left. Is there something you'd like to say? You did sign up. Renee Murray?
Are we talking about the easement now, or?
No.
No.
All right, so you, you, you do not wish to come forward?
No, we not.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Rushing? You have about five minutes left?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Uh, thank you again, Madam Chairman, and, uh, thank you, Commissioner Brandon. You saved me about a minute and a half of, uh, my rebuttal in making those exact points. Um, and I think most of what, um, my esteemed colleague had to say tonight, he, he was probably due in a different forum, maybe at the tax assessor's office, or something that we're not dealing with here today. Um, what we're dealing with is right out of the Ag five section that he kept referring to. Um, in, uh, under Section five oh three, we've got our permission, permitted uses under Sub B. Uh, we have our conditional uses, and then at Sub D of the Ag five zone, which is I'm reading from, the following accessory uses are allowed as conditional uses in Ag five districts. And the very first one, home occupation cottage industry. And then sticking with those regulations, it references over at Section fourteen twenty-five exactly what that is, home occupation cottage industry in the Ag five zone. And there is twenty, a list of twenty requirements for that, and I didn't hear, uh, a violation of single one of them. But, uh, as I pointed out in, in my presentation, all twenty of those, uh, support, uh, the home occupation cottage industry that I just cottage industry that I just described to you. And obviously, he was trying to paint a different picture, that you've got a Har Gray's telephone back there, when I, I've already explained this, he puts in this network in apartment buildings. There's none of those going on back there, so there's not this commercial factory or use going on back there. It is exactly what we're pulling out of the Ag Five section of the home occupation cottage industry. The low impact, as you well put it, certainly a lot lower than other impacts in a Five Zone, and certainly anticipated in the very code sections that he was referring to, and specifically at section 1425. We assert that all 20 of those are met by Mr. Johnson's small cottage business, and that those impacts have been dealt with and are being dealt with by the code section. The protections are there. Yes, unfortunately, I guess, Ms. Knight did sell her property some years ago, and now guess would still like to control it after she has sold it. But again, Mr. Johnson is here, and he's not trying to impede on Ms. Knight's property. I mean, clearly, she lives there, and he does not want to impact her at all, but certainly he would like to run his home occupation business out of his home place. And I think there is just a low impact in asserting that we meet all of these conditions that allow us to do so, we would ask that you recommend approval. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Russian while we're up here?
I have a question for the county staff, one of which is legal ramifications for this agreement for tax abatement that he's gotten. Do we need to take that into account, or is that something that...
No, that's a separate issue. But I am gonna talk with the Tax Assessor's Office about it.
Yeah.
Let them look into it.
Yeah.
And if you permitted the privilege, I'd either like to ask Mr., probably begin with Mr. Rushing, but then maybe some, have some follow-up questions with Mr. Patton and Mr. So, Mr. Rushing, does, you did make reference to some form of outdoor storage of materials or equipment, cable spools or something like that? Well, technically, I don't think that complies with section eight, because it says, "Except for outside storage of materials or equipment, all business operations, activities, and so forth shall be conducted within the primary dwelling and/or in an accessory of building located on the same lot." So, that contemplates indoor storage. And, so, I really have a concern about that, but I'm gonna swing, I think, to Mr. Patton and ask, what has driven this application? How new, how new is this business?
I believe this was a pre-existing business that, I guess, that was discovered at some point by the opposing party and turned over into us, so code enforcement stepped in and made contact with the actual owner. And he came to the office, and he was advised that he was operating without a permitted use in Ag Five, and would need to get the cottage industry if he wished to proceed with his business at that location.
Do you know, or can you subsequently determine if there were any permits for the accessory structures that have been referenced that are on the property?
That was, I don't recall, I don't recall having checked that, if there's a permit for that. I think it was probably assumed that there was.
Is there more than one accessory structure?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
But I think, well, at least I know the house and the pool have a permit.
Okay. But I mean, in an accessory structure, that would be dedicated to the business, outside of what goes on in the residence, for storage or whatever?
Again, not that I recall, but if I remember looking on the tax map, it showed sometime where that building had been there on that property. Wasn't like it was built within the past couple of years.
Well, to Mr. Klassen's point, just for clarity, I mean, the, what's contemplated for cottage industry in an Ag Five business, you know, what we try to do with it with the development standards is to scale it. I mean, you know, it's not intended for heavy industry or light industry or anything like that. It's sort of something in between what would be a home occupation and what you would have to have to hang a shingle somewhere in town, or where it's more developed or more conducive to the use. Now, I don't know, I can make a judgment with the absence of a little more knowledge that this business is out of scale for a cottage industry, but, and I don't like recommending that we delay applications, but I think we need to do a little more due diligence and maybe defer it, because we know Mr. Johnson lives in the primary structure, right? Okay, so, I think we need to get a little more intelligence on the scale of the business. Obviously, occupational tax certificates haven't been acquired, you know, we may have to deal with that. We may have to look at the permits for the accessory structures. And, you know, that's part of the territory when you come across something that hasn't been properly permitted, I guess, according to our codes. But of particular interest I share with Mr. Akins is the COVA eligibility, because if Mr. Johnson has violated COVA, you know, he's just gonna be in for quite a ride with the tax folks. So, you know, I think, I think some things have to be cleaned up in the interest of both parties, because I don't have any reason to suspect that Mr. Johnson intended to create, you know, ill will or do something to be adverse in the neighbors and just thumb his nose at them. But, I think, I think for the purposes of P&amp;Z and the Board of Commissioners, you need a little more information to make a responsible decision.
Allison, when I know this is on another track, but Mr. Klassen's referred to the road, the detriment to the road, but this is a private, not a county-maintained road. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is private.
It's private, subject to county.
The first part of it actually belongs to Ms. Wright, and the rest of it, up to a point, goes over her land, and then it bifurcates, the remainder still over her land, goes to Mr. Johnson, and then the lower point of bifurcation goes to her residence.
Thank you.
While I'm standing up, if I may, one point has concerned me, and it's come up more than once.
We have 57 seconds.
Home occupation cottage industry. Those are two completely different things, and I fear that because we use those two different phrases together, there may be some confusion. A home occupation, for example, according to the definition, employs no more than two persons who don't reside in the house. And there's a flawed list, I'm sure that our county manager and county attorney can go directly to the definition, but it's right here. This is not, by any definition, a home occupation. Cottage industry is a different kind of thing, and it has much different requirements.
Thank you, sir.
So, conservation land is broken up into four different portions on the, that's what it's, so, that could affect and could not affect, it's like 10 acres and he has 14 acres.
Yeah, I'm not an expert on COVA and the relationship to that tax policy. I would completely defer to the Tax Assessor's Office for that, but, you know, if there's a covenant or an agreement for use to be eligible for those tax breaks, then I think some due diligence has to be made to make sure it's been honored, and it may affect the outcome of the application.
With that being said...
If I may also, I know I had some additional time, and I just don't want this commission to be misled. I know Mr. Klassen's, Mr. Klassen may not be looking to do so, but he is reading from the wrong section. He is reading from 1426, which is home occupation residential, and there is a two-person limit on that. We are falling under section 1425, the prior one, which is home occupation, a cottage industry. It's a different set of rules. This one has six employees. And just addressing one point that you may have mentioned, Tom, I believe you referenced a letter H they're under, and...
Yeah, I stand corrected on that, I reread it.
Okay. Thank you.
I do think there's a lot of indecision here, so with that being said, if there's no other questioning from this board, we'll entertain a motion. You have a right to defer, or you have a right...
I'll make a motion to defer till we can get further clarification.
I got a second from Mr. Lane. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of deferment? We're gonna recommend, I guess we have the final saying, deferment, correct? So we will defer this until further notice. Thank you.
Further notice or to the next meeting?
Well, I don't know.
Next meeting.
I said the next meeting, but that may not...
Right, but you can't defer it more than 45 days.
Okay, so, the next meeting.
I would make an assumption that you, it would come back at the next meeting unless it's withdrawn or other circumstances.
All right, then we agreed to defer it to the next meeting, which will be in June, it'll be the 2nd Thursday in June, the date in front of me. Thank you. All right. Agenda item number four. I'll wait just a second. For those who might like to leave. Southbound Timberland Company LLC has submitted an application to rezone approximately 345 acres from Ag Five to Light Industrial for the development of warehouses. The property is on Highway 119 North. Stravinsky Capital Management LLC will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope, Mr. Patton, who is...
I'll take it. Thank you, Madam Chair. This item tonight, Mr. Steve Rushing will be the person as representative of the agent who filed the request on behalf of Southbound Timberland. Just to give you an overview of the case, this is the general location of the property as shown on the future development map for Bullock County, and it's just right at the Bullock-Bryan County line, just east of US Highway 80. In fact, US Highway 80 would be the main entrance for this development, and that should be in Bryan County. This is the current zoning of the property. You can see the parcel outlined in blue. You have to the east, northeast, Flemington Woods subdivision is an Ag Five subdivision, so there are some single-family residences nearby. And then north along Highway 119, there are some smaller parcels in the Ag Five zoning. And then to the west is current use of timberland as well, in an adjacent parcel. So as you can see, there is no direct access to a road into Bullock County, and this, as you can see in the site plan, the entry-exit points of where this would be. Currently, the property is used in a timber use. And this is a screenshot of the site plan that was provided by the applicant. As you can see, the warehouses that are being proposed are part of a larger development that, the majority of it would be in Bryan County. Just as a point to note, we have been in discussion with Bryan County about some items and some concerns. We still have some items that we would intend to address, particularly fire protection for this, for this development. Lot of discussion between staff and the applicant about, you know, adequate fire protection in response times. And so those things, you know, I think would have to be, I mention it for consideration because at this point in time, the Bay Fire Station would be the closest response location. So, we would intend or, and hope that we get some kind of agreement with Bryan County more than what we have now for this. But, as you can see, the overall site plan for that development, they're proposing quite a few warehouses just south of here in the Bryan County. That would be US Highway 80, at the curve road there, entry onto the, for the, for the development would, the Warrenell Farm Road to the south is gonna be the main traffic generator for overall development. That was a primary consideration for the traffic impact analysis that was performed by the engineering firm. But, the overall flow of traffic was considered, you know, for the whole development, in which, if you have more questions about traffic impact analysis, you know, we'd be more happy to address that, or the applicant could as well. But, the, the property really is not visible from the roadway, so we did the best we could on the zoning side, and of course followed through with our normal procedures for notification. This is on US Highway 80, approximate to where the closest road entry point would be onto Highway 80. And it's, again, I don't believe you could see it from Highway 80, but if you've ridden down Highway 80, it's, I believe, north of where the current warehouse is, so it kinda gives you some perspective. It's a half mile, mile down into Bryan County where the traffic impact would be.
Would there be little or no traffic actually coming out eventually onto 80, or would there be...
Well, on Highway 80, which would be US Highway, state-maintained highway, is where the primary impacts would be, and...
Right now it's too lane.
That's all in Bryan County where it's coming out.
And, you know, not to say, well, it's Bryan County, we won't have to worry about it, but their, their current status of this project is that their engineering department is performing a review, and that maybe takes a little bit longer than it has here in Bullock County. But the, but their case is gonna go forward with planning and zoning, I believe, from my understanding, next month. So the greater development to the south has not necessarily been approved. But I did, I did just wanna make that point about the traffic, you know, they are looking at it, but the traffic generators, according to what they've, the analysis they've performed, would generally go south on US Highway 80 towards Interstate 16 in Blitston. So, we feel like there was not as much impact in the Bullock County. Now... Now, we'll mention that a, uh, development of regional impact was, uh, performed in conjunction with Bryan County. And, uh, in your staff report, I did, uh, include their, uh, recommendations and of which the greater, uh, I guess concern by the Regional Commission may be, uh, current workforce. But, you know, this being a multi-year project, that's just, you know, for your consideration that, you know, it's just something to consider. With those points being made, and of course, if you wanna have any questions about them, be more than happy to address them. But, uh, with that being said, staff recommends approval of the rezone request with the, uh, there's a few special conditions that we've included in staff report that we feel like, you know, were necessary. But by and large, they, we have the supplemental standards that they would have to follow. And, uh, once it's through the development pipeline, you have the conceptual site plan come back to you and have another look at it. So any, any questions for me?
I have one. It's really hard to tell, uh, how does this tract actually fit into the, uh, comprehensive land use plan? Where does it fall? Cause I...
So this, um, yeah, that star covers it up. But in our amendment process a year or two ago, um, it was considered as part of, um, you know, we knew we would get some pressure for some warehouses. And by, by pressure, I mean, you know, general ask for rezonings. And so that committee discussed, you know, what, to what extent would we want warehouses? And, uh, what would, we, they felt like would, um, you know, work in the future. And this parcel's and adjacent parcel's actually labeled in, as an employment district, which would align with the light industrial warehousing type zone. Just in, based on, uh, you know, very, the very limited, uh, I think want for warehouses in the future, that, that committee that, which I think two of y'all were on, um, you know, discussed some of that and that's kind of where, where it landed.
From my knowledge of this land, the part in Bullock County, if it, if Bryan County doesn't approve their part, they can't develop this part, this in Bullock County. There's no road access to...
Right. So, uh, I'm not sure exactly how that would work for Bryan County. I mean, I guess they would have to...
They can't, they can't access it if they don't do the part in Bryan County.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair to say, yeah.
Can I weigh in on that? Cause I, I kind of had that same question and, and Mr. Rushing may need to weigh in on that. But if the Bryan County rezon was not approved, is it a rezone in Bryan, James? Do you know?
Yes.
The commissioners will have to ultimately vote on it, right?
Now, unless they acquired a piece of property going up to one nineteen, which then they have to get that rezoned through us and we would have a little more, I mean, we have to look at it again.
One nineteen access that property?
Well, it doesn't, but I'm just saying. I'm, you know, I'm not suggesting that is in the works or anything, but just that that could change things too.
Well, my, my question, would it make sense to defer this? Not that I want, it sounds like the June meeting's gonna be really long if we keep deferring things, but would it be, make sense to defer this until we see what Bryan County Planning Commission does? I mean...
Contingent upon that, will it not?
Because if y'all are voting on something that may or may not go forward, I, I mean, Steve, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't mean to...
And I wanna address them in...
That's all I'll say and that, that was my thought, so, but I'll, I'll be quiet.
Okay. Well, if you're through with Mr. Rushing, turn it over to you.
Thank you, uh, once again, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. You get me again. Steve Rushing, attorney with Talby, Rushing, Snipes, Marsh and Hodgins. And, and yes, tonight, um, uh, acting as an agent for Stravinsky Capital Management LLC. They do, uh, we do have with us, um, from that company, uh, Mr. John Wodis. And now I, I, I mentioned that because he's flung from Texas, flew into Savannah, drove through a storm to get here. So he's very determined and he's here along with our engineer, Jason Chambliss. Uh, he's with Thomason Hutton and that agency is the engineers for all of this project and for, uh, Bryan County. And he may be able to address some of what you've stated already, cause he's very much involved in the infrastructure aspect of it. But yes, uh, right now, uh, the parcel that we are bringing before you is owned by Southbound Timberlands LLC. This property that they own is about five hundred acres. Three hundred and forty-five or so, plus a minus of it is in the Bullock County and a hundred and sixty-five acres of it is in, uh, Bryan County. And, uh, that, uh, one hundred and sixty-five acres is indeed, uh, the subject of similar applications, uh, at, in Bryan County, um, for that part of the Southbound property. But there's also another five hundred and ten acres that is already owned by Stravinsky Capital, not under contract with Southbound, that is already zoned, um, industrial. And so, uh, you're just talking about extending, or they own the property or have under contract from Bullock County, this site, all the way to a public road. So, uh, they've already got five hundred acres zoned industrial that they can do warehouses. If they don't zone to one sixty-five, we can certainly extend the road to this site. We're just talking about getting to it, uh, from Highway eighty and they own or have under contract all the way back to Highway eighty. So with this three hundred and forty-five acres, they already got five hundred acres already zoned. It's a hundred and sixty-five, it's another tract that is, um, part of this Southbound property, cause it's, it's one big five hundred tract that is under, um, being consideration in Bryan County. So we are seeking to, for, to rezone the three hundred and forty-five in Bullock County for the, the projects that you've just seen. It's a warehousing distribution center. Uh, it is focused because most of the acreage, uh, is in Bryan County. It's just due to this tract that extends on into Bullock County. And I was gonna mention, there is a corresponding zoning going on at the same time for the remainder of this tract, uh, in Bryan County. But that is in addition to the five hundred acres that Stravinsky already owns in its name that's already been zoned.
And what county is that five hundred acres in?
Pardon? That's all in Bryan County. Yeah, of the, it's a thousand acres either under contract or they own. Three hundred and forty-five is in Bullock and the remainder is in Bryan County.
Mr. Rushing, could I ask Mr. Patton or Mr. Pope to pull back a couple of slides to show the total warehouse development? Maybe you can...
Yeah.
Indicate possibly what parts have already been rezoned, if it, if this map represents what you're talking about.
Yes, sir, it is. Really, the rest of this tract would only involve, um, I guess the top three, you see those on the very top, those three are in Bullock County. If you look at the next two to the south of that, would, that would be on, uh, this same tract of land that Southbound owns. All the rest of that is on land that Stravinsky already owns, it's already zoned. If that...
Yeah, I just thought it would be...
Yes.
A helpful image.
It, it is to actually see what we're talking about. So yes, the whole project's roughly a, a thousand acres. Now, all of that is not buildable. As you see, if you see the green area there, uh, that is, uh, wetlands and of course you've got some detention. Just looking at this three hundred and forty-five, I saw what we're looking at, it's the Bullock County property. Between two hundred and two, hundred and fifty is uplands and the rest of it is, um, uh, wetlands or other type, uh, uh, land. But I, I'll point out, if you look at, just so happens where the wetlands are located in Bullock County, and again, that's inside the red box, um, most of that is between where we're proposing for the warehouses in Flemington Woods subdivision. So you're looking at a significant natural buffer of woods and wetlands between our proposed warehouses, uh, and the Flemington Woods, um, rural subdivision that you see there. Again, I appreciate, uh, um, reference to the, the, the big project there. The, those three units that are in Bullock County, roughly a little less than three million square feet, um, again, will have a pretty significant buffer there. The access is straight into the rest of the project. And again, if, if the other part of this tract gets rezoned, you'll see those other two warehouses just south of that. If not, then you're looking at going straight into the rest of the five hundred acres that adjoins this property that's already in existence and already zoned. That will take you all the way out to Highway eighty. And yes, according to the traffic analysis plan, uh, they are anticipating most of that truck traffic is gonna try to get on I sixteen at the two eighty, uh, access road, which is all in Bryan County. So far as the, the road access in, in Bullock, very little if any impact, maybe some employees might would come in that way. We don't expect, um, the main truck traffic to come back into Bullock County. So there's, uh, it's all gonna be out into, uh, Bryan County and probably to, to two eighty onto I sixteen. Now, this multi-million dollar project, and I'm talking about again the part in just Bullock County is multi-million dollar project, not counting what's in, uh, Brown. This, upon construction, would be immediately on the county tax base, um, following its completion, its construction. And, uh, also allow me to state here, um, that we checked with the Development Authority and showed that to the officers there of our current Development Authority of Bullock County and they stated, and they authorized me to relate that to you, that Development Authority of Bullock County generally supports industrial growth in Bullock County in locations that would best serve our citizens. Since this location is in the employment district area, that's what Mr. Brandon asked, um, of the future land use plan, its location suggests that this site is appropriate for industrial development. Now, after reviewing, uh, the entire county departmental review, uh, all of our folks and engineers, they've accepted, um, the staff's analysis. But I will address that comprehensive plan since that's come up a couple of times. The employment, uh, district designation, I think that lies on, um, page ninety-three of the comprehensive plan. It states what is anticipated in the employment district. Uh, the very first is zoning classification, light industrial, which is what we're seeking. It also allows heavy industrial. Infrastructure, it says municipal water. Uh, now warehouses, as you might expect, are a relatively low, uh, water user. Uh, this project would obtain its water and sewer through Bryan County's existing facilities, uh, since the largest part of the project does lie just across the line in Bryan County, as shown on our site plan. Uh, however, our buildings will have, and, and they have had these discussions with fire, uh, departments in both, uh, Bullock and Bryan, but they will have an early suppression, fast response fire suppression system or ESFR. Uh, that's driven by diesel fire pump. Obviously, we hope we never turn that on, but, um, that would be another potential water use if we, uh, for fire protection. Now, the staff report, after going through this analysis, did recommend three conditions. If this zoning is approved, all of which is acceptable, uh, to our, our, to the applicant. So, uh, based on that, we assert that the existing ordinances, together with the conditions that have been proposed by the staff, adequately protect, protect the nearby property owners that, in order to minimize impacts, remember there, there's a buffer requirements under the code, if there's any additional needed, over and above the natural buffers that exist. Uh, very little, uh, impact to our roads. I think it's just a win-win for Bullock County. So we respectfully request this commission adopt the staff report and recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of our application for a light industrial zone with the staff's suggested conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rushing.
Got nineteen seconds.
We do have several people signed up to speak. So if we reset the clock at ten minutes, I will call it, Mr. Chris Roberts.
Good afternoon. I'll try to make this as fast as possible and try to cover a lot of information. Um, I live on one nineteen on a family farm, about two hundred and sixty acres. I'm the fifth generation living there. There's quite a few environmental impact issues, the wetlands and the flood areas that he's previously, previously talked about and it shows on the map. There are little white blocks cover up a lot of the flood plain on the little map there. The wetlands and the flood area that is already there helps drain the property on the lower end of Bullock County. Lower end of Bullock County is known as the swamps. That's part of the old rice paddy fields area down there. And the natural drains drain the property, so the property is usable. Not only is the natural drainage problem, or drainage areas down there, back around World War One, there was canal system put in down there that is still in effect today. It was put in to drain the property so it could be used for farming and timber use. Well, that drainage is still in effect. It drains our farm, drains it so we, we're able to live in that area. This canal drains all the way through, goes through all the little property they have listed there, and it drains into the Black Creek watershed program. Well, if you figure one inch of rain on the surface collects, on one square foot, it collects zero point six gallons on one square foot of land on surface. So you figure a three million square foot of land and he goes to dropping one inch of rain, which we had almost a little over an inch down there this afternoon, it's gonna produce one million eight hundred thousand gallons of water off of his three, three million square foot that they're proposing to build in there. What's gonna happen with all that water? It says in their plan, that they're planning on using the natural drains that are already there to get the water off the, off of their, their stuff. I'm concerned about the water being pushed back on my property and on my, all my neighbors. Um, it's already wet down there and we rely on the systems and the nation, nature to, to get rid of the water that's there. And if they put this in there, um, water's not gonna get out. Or it's gonna back up on me and cause my cows to have hoof rot. It's gonna flood my barns out and my hay's gonna get damaged and I won't have nothing to feed my cows with. Could even flood my house out. Also, the noise, they'll be adding twenty-four hour a day truck traffic. The back edge of the posed warehouse, the big warehouse in the top right corner of that picture out there, um, it'll only be twelve hundred foot from my uncle's back steps. It'd be a thousand foot from the edge of my cow pasture. And it's only, I think it was eleven hundred and something foot from the further spread people in Flemington Woods. They was talking about it not being, having a big natural barrier there. I don't know, but a thousand foot ain't very large. It's not a whole lot of space. You know, what is the, uh, constant backup alarms of these trucks backing up, the exhaust fumes, um, the steady noises of the volt list beep, beep, beep all hours of the night? What's that gonna do to my cattle herd? You know, it's gonna be stressing my cows out and I'm not gonna be able to produce calves. Lot of, lot of impact. Talking about fire service, working with Bryan County, I'm in the fire service. There's not been a whole lot of conversation, conversation with Bryan County, um, about it. It is closer to Bryan County, full of Bryan County Fire Department. It says in your little, the little packet on the front page there that, uh, the closest fire department is one point five miles. And that, and it says further in the packet that that'd be the Bay District Fire Station. It's a little over eight mi, almost eight and a half miles to the Bay Fire Station. So it's nine miles to the Stilson Fire Station. Well, we'll have to respond a mile and a half into another county to cover that, them buildings with fire services. At this point, they won't even be able to get ISO insurance on this property without fire service. They'll be in class ten ISO regulation on that end of the county, as is most of the people that are sitting in here already. Our insurance has jumped up. Our insurance has jumped up. Some people can't get insurance when they build a house or a shop or business down there at this point already. I hate to speak for the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department, if they go in there to do patrol, they looking at having to go outside the county, go out of their way to go in there even do patrol because they'll be patrolling, having to go a mile and a half just to gain access to the property into another county. Bryan County has already absorbed a lot of warehouse land, so much 5,000 acres they've absorbed since this project, the car project started off. A lot of this land's been sitting idle for four years. Just off the top of my head, within the last year and a half, there's four, three warehouses that have been built down there. There's nothing going in it. The people can't, the people can't lease it. Nobody wants them. Straight across from the property, the big field where the, in the Bryan County section where it comes out on the Highway 80 there where they talk about the property coming in, I think it's Seaport 16 owns that land already. When I spoke to them, why they, why did they quit building? They built the platform out there two years ago for a warehouse. And when I asked them why they quit, he says, "The economy's gone south. Nobody wants a warehouse at this point." He says, "We can't sell it, so we're not going to build it." With everything just sitting, why does Bullock County want to be subject to these problems and issues that Bryan County is already having with running numerous fire calls, people coming in from the outside or having accidents, having to send fire and EMS, Sheriff's Department, the water issues, causing all the neighbors in the community headaches and troubles? Bullock County is a farming and timber county. That's what started this county. I think that's where we need to stay at. That land's timber land. It's wet, it's soggy, it ain't good for warehouses as good for growing timber. Thank you all.
There are only two and a half minutes left, and there are probably seven or eight other people signed up to speak. So the next one in line is Mr. Larry Roberts.
I don't know if he'll show up, but you can try. Little red button there.
You don't show up for sales, do you?
Thank you. He said about everything that I need to say, but there's been some statements made here tonight that are absolutely not true. Mr. Stravinsky, I have a letter on my desk that came from a real estate company representing your name. And we own the adjoining property. Is this your environmental engineer?
No, we're not associated with any of that.
Anyway, where the three warehouses are, we join all the land behind it. We farm that land for about five generations. And I have a proposal today. They're trying to buy my land, and that would put all that traffic in Bullock County. Mr. Brandon farms. He knows the difficulties that we have faced over the years with environmental issues and wetlands. If this goes in, like my son said, we're going to have pastures that are going to be flooded, hay barns are going to be flooded, and we're going to be out of business. And for the value that Bullock County is going to receive, it's not there. If these 50 people employed in three warehouses, that'll be a lot. But if they buy that land from me, the traffic issue in Bullock County is going to be, is going to be paramount. Where they're going to be dumping traffic from these other warehouses are going to be dumping out that road that's going to go into 118. The statement that they're going to go to Blitston to get on I-16, they're going to come out and go to Highway 46 and get on I-16, which is much closer. I'm opposed to it for the environmental reasons and the impact or the lack of impact financial that it's going to have on Bullock County. But the people in that end of the county, we're going to be flooded out. No other way that you can do it. The natural drain, that's not a natural drain. That was dug in the early part of 1900 to, to drain land where it could be farmed. So I appreciate your consideration. Apologize about my voice. I got some esophagus issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right, that's taken up the 10 minutes, but I think Mr. Russian has a few seconds left if you'd like to come.
Well, I know it'll have long, but we certainly have a team of engineers in Thomason Hutton that are addressing these issues. No disrespect, I know they, these are great farmers, and they do have to have environmental and irrigation, but that's why we engage the experts. He's here, our engineer, if y'all have real questions about that, but that's why we engage them. Thank you.
Are there any questions on this commission? Then we will entertain a motion or recommendation. All right, we have a recommendation from Mr. Brandon for, to recommend denial. Is there a second from Mr. Lane? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of denial? That's one, two, three, four. All those in opposition? One. We got that? All right, at this point, we're going to recommend denial to the county commissioners. That gives you some weeks, several weeks to work out some issues. Good luck, and we appreciate it. Thank you. We've still got several more items, and there are people who have been here for a while. Agenda item number five, Quality Home Development LLC. Rocky Sellers' agent has applied for a variance to reduce a 40-foot front setback to a 30-foot. The property is located at 1421 Jordan Drive, Lot 101 in Meadow Lakes subdivision.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go ahead and apologize for being long-winded on this case, but there is some background to it that I feel, you know, the board would probably want to know. This is the approximate location of the, of the property. It's generally located around the Georgia Southern Golf Course, south of Statesboro. Jordan Drive is a cul-de-sac street that enters onto High Tower Road. This property is, is highlighted with the parcel in blue. As you can see, it does sit at the end of a, at the end of the street in a cul-de-sac. And there are some wetlands towards the rear of the property, in which generally those are the trees that you see on the property here. This is the, what the property looks like currently. This house was substantially completed, but, and to go into the history of it, at the time of when the, prior to when the footers and the concrete slab were poured, we conducted, my department, the building inspector, conducted a inspection for the slab. And generally, our procedure in building permits is that we now require site plans to be turned in so that we have a desk review of every potential structure that's, you know, to be built. We do try to do the best due diligence that we can in citing a home that, to ensure that it meets the setbacks. In this, in the zoning category, you would have a 40-foot setback from the property line. The site map, as displayed, failed to consider the distance at the property line, or it was kind of unclear, so it, we thought we had it clarified there at the desk review. And then when the inspector got out into the field, once the boards were in place and everything's ready to pour concrete the next day, the inspector said, you know, "It looks like the house is going to be too close. The setbacks are, you know, we need to get the setback seen about." And I actually had a, I was involved in it, and I, inspector called me as well as a building official and went out, and I looked at it, building official looked at it. And between the three of us, we conferenced and decided we need to instruct the applicant or the permittee to have a surveyor mark the property lines. It was represented, after that conversation, it was represented by the applicant to, to the inspector that the property lines were marked, in which the inspector took his word for it. There were stakes in the front yard, but as it turns out, the, the property was not surveyed by a registered surveyor. And so in, in believing that the property was in fact surveyed, the inspector approved it. And so as we, as it stands today, the house was, you know, inspected beyond, you know, with all the inspections that are required. And then so when it started becoming an issue, I think with some of the neighbors about maybe some of the covenants and things that are at issue with the, with that home, the setbacks were caught into question again. And so that's when we got to talking to the applicant and just discovered that, well, in fact, it was not a surveyor that marked the lines. So, you know, at this point, I guess we bring it to the board to maybe be the judge on what, what y'all would prefer us to do. But if you approve the setback variance, then the house will essentially stay as it is. If you deny it, then I guess that's, that's a case that I would have to ask Mr. Akins about on, you know, procedure on what, what the options are. But I just wanted to make, make sure that, you know, this board knew the kind of, the story of how we got to a house built, and it's not in proper setback. So I believe my department did our best to get due diligence, and unfortunately, some, I guess, these things arise sometimes. And so with that, I'll just show the last little bit of the pictures. The entryway onto the, onto the property as it's built actually uses the, I guess, public easement or some, going back to the parcel. The neighbor to the left also uses this, this drive. But that's where the property enters into that. And I don't know if any of you had a chance to get out and look at it in person, but that is the, I guess, the ditch there at the cul-de-sac. And so typically, the property line would be, you know, what, 10 or 20 feet back from the, from the pavement. So, you know, it was a, it was a call where you just kind of relied on, you know, information that, believing that we had a registered surveyor mark it. But, and Mr. Patton, if you want to add anything, because Mr. Patton was also involved in it, and we had code enforcement looking into it and everything, so.
I think James has pretty much summed up everything that, that we would like to add.
Being said, then are we ready for Mr. Sellers to come forward? Mr. Sellers?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any questions?
Well, I have a real concern that you did not have a registered surveyor to survey the property.
Uh, no, ma'am, I did not. I purchased the property, and when I purchased the property, went through closing, and when I went to the property originally and looked at the property and kind of assessed where things were, there were a couple of, you know, identifying markers that were down in the ground that I was able to locate based off of the plat that I was provided, and found these pins down in the ground, also with some, what you would call maybe like a, an older flag that you would stick in the ground. And it was just about rusted to pieces, so it had been there for some time. And so based off of that, and finding another pin relatively in a location of where I thought it would be, it made sense to me that somebody had marked these, these spots before. And so those were what we went off of. Now, when I originally had the inspector come out and look at the property, he did say, "Hey," he actually called me on the phone, and he said, "Hey, I don't see where your property markers are." And I said, "Well, they are marked. There's, there's one on this end and one on the other end." And he said, "Well, I don't see them. I don't know where they're at." So at that point in time, you know, I came in, met with Mr. Pope, and we sat down, we pulled it up on the Tax Assessor's website. We pulled up, I had a copy of the plat, we looked at it, and we looked at the site plan. And so, and from my understanding of what our discussion was, was that, hey, if these are marked, then we'll go back out there and look at it, these spots, and see if they're there. And I said, "They are, and I'll pull a string across it so y'all have even more visual aids to look for." And also, on the site plan, which I don't know if there's a, if y'all have a copy of it or not, but on the site plan, my understanding was from the road to where the front of that house is, there needed to be at least 50 foot off the road. And so from the road to where that garage, which is in question, is the front corner of the garage, which is in question on this 40-foot setback, was 51 foot. And so based off of our conversation, that's what I was under the impression that, hey, you know, you're fine, because when they came out and looked at it again, they gave me the approval. I would have never moved forward with, with any building had they told me, "Hey, no, you know, you need to get, I need to get you something in writing that says you had this surveyed by a licensed surveyor." I would have had no problem doing that. And if I, if they would have told me that I needed to move the house back to accommodate for that garage being over the line, I would have done it. But I didn't intentionally do anything to, to cause any heartache or any discomfort. And like he said, there was definitely some miscommunication, probably on my end along with theirs. And I, I mean, I didn't intentionally try to cause any heartburn or, or heartaches for anybody involved.
When you purchased this property, whenever that was...
Yes, ma'am.
There was nothing in record about the property lines?
I mean, there's a plat that would show the location, but I would like to remind the applicant that we do have an email from Sidney Austin who emailed him requesting a surveyor mark the lines. So I think that's stretching a little bit on what you just said, but...
Well, that, that may be so. I, I don't have a copy of that email with me, and if he does have it, he may be completely 100% correct. And I will not object to that if that's the case. But this, this certain piece of property here has had some issues from day one in regards to different things. And I've had different people come out, soil scientists have come out, wetland delineation specialists have come out, and everybody has used the same lines. And so based off of that, I'm thinking, these people are way more educated in this than I am. I'm going to go off of what they're using, and that was probably my mistake. And I'll take full responsibility for that.
All right, there are several people that are signed up to speak, but...
All right, there are several people that are signed up to speak, but do, to proceed. Should I get them, go ahead or before I ask the county for some clarification?
I think it'd be helpful to, um, hear the persons who want to speak first.
All right.
So we get a fuller picture of concerns.
All right, there are four, uh, three people more beside Mr. Sellers who wants to speak. First of which is Jerry Darcy. Remember, there are 10 minutes.
Thank y'all for hearing me tonight. First and foremost, just thank you all for the opportunity to voice my opinion in opposition to this variance. Um, my name is Jerry Darcy. I've lived out in Meadow Lakes. We moved in 1999 in August, my wife, we built our house. Um, so I come before you today just as a concerned citizen. I mean, I'm deeply vested in Meadow Lakes. Um, and several of the people, they couldn't be here tonight, so they've asked me to speak for it. My ex-creator lives across the road and he was terribly upset by the way it was going on, how close the house was. Um, and I said, more people in this subdivision, we've got a little survey for people that are against the variance. Um, just want to say that. I work for Reeves Construction. I've been there for 28 years. I'm a senior project manager in the survey department. Before that, I worked for a civil engineer doing survey and design on subdivisions. And when Mr. Rock, Rocky came out there and was looking at the property, I volunteered to find the property corners for him, because that's what I do for a living. I find corners, I find right-of-way, I build roads. And he asked others in the neighborhood, is this your property corner? Well, they kept telling him, come to me, because I could tell, because I've surveyed all that before Georgia Southern, bought this subdivision, or this golf course, I surveyed our part of the subdivision, so we'd all know where our corners are. So, I said, um, and we all got concerned when we started watching it. You know, foundation goes down, I'm not going to be over in someone's yard looking at it. And then when it went up with the walls, and that kind of concerned me. Then all of a sudden, there was a piece of rebar that appeared out there on the road, on the front side of the slope of the ditch, and had a string tied to it. And another one was going to a T-post that was a witness to my neighbor's, um, property corner that was 10 feet off. Basically, he used three property corner, three corners out there that were not his property corners. They were at least 10 feet outside of his property. So when you do that and you start pulling that in, all of a sudden, your house isn't where it's supposed to be. And also, we have a covenants, this plat Mr. Carte built, so really nice subdivision for us out there. And so we have a covenants, and they're still in effect until 20, say, 2028. And we have an additional 10-feet setback over the county setback in that area around your cul-de-sacs. That's 50 feet, so your house is sitting off the road on the cul-de-sacs. If you live on the main through fair through there, you're back another 10 feet. It's a 60-foot setback. All of this is in the courthouse with a plat that has a setback line where this property is built at 50 feet. And he didn't build it there. He pushed it closer. He didn't do anything that he was supposed to on that. Um, I'm sorry that he took other people's advice where the property lines are, but he should have came to the professionals. Like I said, my manager, the construction manager, he's a registered land surveyor and I work with him every day. Um, basically, the way our subdivision's set up, having that setback, it looks really nice. When you ride down the road, everybody's away from the road, nobody's pushed up on it. And this house right here is out of place. It doesn't meet our covenants as far as square footage. It's 300 square feet, too small. I know that's not with you all, but it's too small, it's out of place, it's too close to the road. The best thing that can happen, go ahead and just push the whole thing down. Because it is not meeting with what our subdivision looks like. And like I said, I just want y'all to, you know, come out there and look at the subdivision. We have a nice place. We want everything to look good. And with this house going in too close there, it does not look like the rest of our subdivision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darcy.
And I have the plat here and like I said, I did all the research, went to the courthouse, found it. And if you had a 300-foot tape, you could go out there and use it and pull all your distances that you need to, to find your property corners on it.
Thank you, sir. Jessica Hawken.
Hello, I'm Jessica Hawken, and we own 1417 Jordan Drive, and we also own the lot that is between our house and the house that this, um, property is getting built on. And I have multiple issues with the build of this house, and I'm not sure this is the proper forum to discuss all of them. However, the one issue that I would like to address it tonight is the property survey. Uh, most of the subsequent issues that have arisen during the build would have seemingly been avoided had there been a property survey done prior to beginning construction. I assumed that prior to beginning any building whatsoever, that a property survey, that the property survey had been done, and that the builder knew exactly where his property lines were located. So the following conversation that I had with him was predicated on that assumption. Just after the foundation was laid, so this would have been in the time that I, I'm sorry, who, um, that Mr. Simon was talking about? This would have been in the time when you, um, when he had put the foundation down and when, I guess your office had not come back out just yet, or that he'd gotten the letter that he wasn't going to get approved. Uh, anyway, just after that had happened, I had a conversation with the builder in which he told me that the county inspection office wouldn't pass him on his current inspection due to the fact of the setback of his property was incorrect, and also the fact that the driveway didn't connect directly to the street. And at the time that he pulled up some maps on his phone and he showed them to me, and he asked me what my interpretation of the maps was. And I looked at the phone and I said, uh, I'm sure that if he measured from the property line, that he should be completely fine. And I also added that I personally know absolutely nothing about setbacks and property lines whatsoever. And I suggested that our direct neighbor, uh, is a surveyor and would absolutely be the best person to ask these questions to. That's Jerry, who was just up here talking. And I said, you know, Jerry is at home a lot of the time. He, I think he works from home, and anytime his red truck is in the driveway, he's there. So you can go over just across the street and ask him. And at that same conversation, I asked, um, Mr. Sellers what he would do if Bullock County did not approve him to go forward. And he indicated that he thought since they approved his initial application, and where his foundation was placed was exactly where it was indicated on the application, that essentially they were now between rock and a hard place and they would have to approve him, because they made the initial error in approving the application to begin with. And he said he was going to reach out to the supervisor of the department and see if the inspector's initial denial could be overridden. I talked to him several weeks after that, and after his building had commenced, and he said that Bullock County had decided to approve him to move forward. So during the next few weeks, the neighbors started to notice multiple issues, including the setback, square footage, driveway, the drainage, uh, et cetera. And so people made calls, and then other inspectors and people like he talked about started to come out to the property and take a look at stuff. And on March 11th, we noticed that, um, a surveyor was over on the edge of our adjacent lot to his property. So we went over and talked to that surveyor, and he indicated that he was doing a property survey on March 11th. On March 11th, this house was almost in the condition that they showed you guys today. It had the roof, it had the windows, it was, it was almost done. And at that point, he decided he should go ahead and pay for a whole entire survey. Um, so I didn't know this prior to coming tonight, because honestly, I truly assumed that prior to letting anyone build in Bullock County, they would have to have a survey done, that it would be absolutely required. So my question that I had written out prior to hearing this tonight was either there were two surveys done, one prior to building and another halfway through, or there was no survey done prior to building, and every measurement was a guess, and it is really off. It's not just the 10 feet like the county, it's more like 30 feet to be in accordance with what the rest of our neighborhood looks like. Um, like I said, there is so many issues with this property, and not even to bring them all up here tonight, but the survey issue, it seems not acceptable. And it also seems like he kind of knew that Bullock County would have to allow him to move forward when I talked to him after that, because they had approved his application. And that's it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mr. Blake McMillan. You've got about a minute and a half, a little less?
I'm, I'm, I'm four.
All right.
Uh, Blake McMillan, Island Nymark Homes. Uh, thank y'all for letting me be here. Rocky is a friend of mine. I helped him to start his building business. Um, I went out to the property as well, and I read all the covenants, and I can assure you that all the covenants, uh, all the houses in that neighborhood do not follow the covenants. The setback, I believe, when he located the pins, they pulled it up, and I don't know what the conversation was between Mr. Pope and Mr. Sellers, um, but he said that, you know, they had approved his variant, or, you know, approved the setback. And I think it was just a matter of misunderstanding on Mr. Sellers' part. I don't think he, you know, I don't think it was clear to him that he needed a registered land surveyor, because you absolutely do not need a registered land surveyor to build a home in Bullock County. You do not need a registered land surveyor to pull a permit or build a home in Bullock County. So I came on behalf of him as someone who has helped mentor him and introduced him into the building business, uh, some years ago. And I can tell you, the guy's got better character than me. He's a good guy. He just made a mistake. He thought the pin was there, he went to the county, he talked to them about the pin, they said okay, he thought he was okay. They would not have let him pour the slab, do the frame, put the air conditioner, electro and plumbing in, and inspect it unless they had approved him to pour that slab. So he was under the understanding that it was okay. And so, you know, what he's faced with is cutting off 10 feet of that garage, or whatever he needs to do to be in compliance with the county. So that seems excessive when I know builders in this town have built on the wrong property. I know all kinds of things that have occurred. And so I'm, I'm like, you know, I don't think they're going to give you a hard time, but they could, you know? I mean, you mess up. And I just wanted to speak on his behalf. He is a good young man and knew it building, and he's, he's going to build a lot of nice homes in Bullock County. And I wanted to, uh, speak on his behalf that I actually went out there and looked at it, and I've been building for 30 years. So, I, you know, he made a mistake, and I, I think that it doesn't impact the neighborhood. I mean, it's not reduced anybody's property values. The, you know, it, it's, it is outside of the bounds of the setback, but no one is really harmed. Like, you know, and I think like Mr. Brandon had, or I can't remember his, Mr. Brandon, yes, said, you know, there, there's the spirit of all, you know, and the intent of things. And I just believe, I know his heart, and I know he's a good guy, and I can assure you, his intent was not to deceive anybody. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions on this mission? Um, no, that was it. The last one was Mr. Sellers, and he's already gotten the right to speak. He's already, they, okay.
Yeah, I just, uh, again, I just wanted to say, I didn't intentionally do anything to cause any trouble or any heartburn. Um, Mr. Blake said it, I'm still a little new at this, uh, so still trying to get my legs underneath me. But, you know, I, the lot's been sitting since the early 90s, probably since the late 80s. Um, I felt like I could get the, the lot and do something with it, bring some type of, you know, positive impact to a neighborhood that in that area, um, obviously is on a golf course, and is probably going to have nice folks come and live and, and be a good taxpaying base. Um, there was some, uh, miscommunication, obviously. Um, I feel like, I know that, um, based off the report, that, uh, the two, you know, solutions would be, hey, we'll give you the variance, or we're not going to give you the variance, and then you'll have to dismantle the portion of the house that is over the setback. Um, being that the house is kind of on a cul-de-sac there, there's nobody immediately to my right, nobody immediately to my left, there's nobody immediately right in front of me, uh, or behind me, because there's a golf course back there. Um, I don't see any negative impact to the neighborhood. I know they were bringing up covenants. I spoke with my real estate, uh, closing attorney about those covenants. Those covenants, uh, Mr. Jerry is correct, there is covenants in that neighborhood that do make you adhere to a 2,000-square-foot minimum on any house or any lot that is still owned by the developer. My lot was sold in 1991 to a third party. That change in the covenants did not come into effect until 1992. The way it was explained to me, and it was, uh, explained to my real estate broker, was that your house adheres to the original covenants that were wrote, which required a 1,500-square-foot house. So that's, that's kind of.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sellers?
So can you remove that portion that's out of the setback?
Uh, yes, sir, we can, I mean, you can remove it. Uh, the only, the only concern I have is that the way the property line runs and the way the house is positioned, you're only going to be cutting off a triangular piece of that garage, because it sits, you know, at an angle. So you could, um, but I feel like, uh, in the reality of things is that that would diminish the property values around me even more, because now I'd be selling a home, uh, that would be a one-car garage at best versus a two-car garage. And so that would, I feel like negatively impact the home values around me more than, you know, the variance would.
I think I'd like to have some input from the county, if I may.
Well, it appears to be a cluster.
And I'd rather you say that.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, you, you, you have certain conflicts, it sounds like, not only between the zoning code and no matter who did what to get where, where this is at today, but, you know, uh, anything, I think regarding the covenants, and I can't speak to the covenants really, because I, I haven't seen them, but it would occur to me that if there are covenant violations with, with the structure, potentially, I mean, that, that's going to be between Mr. Sellers' attorney and the HOA. You know, in that case, it would probably fall on the HOA to take action in that regard. I'm still not sure I'm clear about the whole survey thing. You know, um, it's about as confusing as that trucking facility we talked about at the beginning. So, um, you know, it's, on the one hand, I can see where, you know, some, some form of considerable, considerable investment has been made, but then at the same time, the neighbors have a vested interest in, in their properties too, and they're relying both on zoning and their own covenants, um, even though they may not really conflict a little bit. It sounds like the covenants, as Mr. Darcy described them, maybe could enhance the zoning code in favor of the neighborhood. So, uh, you, I, I think the two options that, that the staff has, has given you are, are both valid, and, um, I'm, I'm not sure that I can think of a third unless the neighbors were, um, were somehow willing to, um, confer with the applicant. And I don't know if buffers can be put up, or if there's other kinds of, um, property mitigation that could occur that would lessen the impact or the concerns of, of, of the, of the neighbors. You know, that, I'm not sure in my 20 years, we've had a variance quite like this. So that's where I'll defer to Mr. Akins.
I have a question. Do you have the current survey of the lot with the house on?
Uh, yes, sir, I do.
You have the weekly?
Um, I do not, but I can get it for you. Yes, sir.
Can they lay the dollar short?
Nope.
See a picture of where the...
The only thing I'd add is that...
Visual reference of the front of the house and the setback line to see what we're actually...
I do have, I could show it to you on my phone if that would suffice.
Can you project it? It might be that we can project it.
Maybe while he's doing that, Mr. Akins may have a couple of comments.
Well, I was just going to say, the only thing I'd add is that I think the ordinance says, in considering whether to grant a variance or not, you need to consider whether the spirit and intent of the ordinance is being violated or preserved.
What we have are either to agree with the variance to grant it, or to have them tear down part of that garage.
Yeah. I mean, that's the two choices, yeah. The purpose.
What do you need?
I'll let Tom, he's four first in that.
Well, you know, typically, unless you're like in a traditional neighborhood development in a more urban area, you know, you generally need a little more distance back on the front setback from the road, which also accommodates either some of the utility easements or everything else that's in the right of way. You know, 40 feet really isn't that much, but, you know, it's not like up on a sidewalk if you're in a brownstone in New York City either. And I think the setbacks, if you look at it from what planners call traditional, not traditional, but Euclidean zoning, which was really, you know, formed in 1926, and I won't get into the history, all that, but, you know, it's a dimensional kind of measurement, so there's adequate air and light and safety between buildings, you know, right down to a fire, although you can have attached structures too. But, given the zone they're in, well, actually, I think that subdivision predated zoning, didn't it?
I believe it did.
But I think if, even if it did, it appeared to mimic the type of residential zones that we have now in a more suburban rural setting like a R-15, or I'm sorry, R-25 or R-40. And I call them leave-it-to-beaver lots, you know? You just have a little separation between the homes, you can have a yard, you can have landscaping, you know? That, I think that's pretty much the intent of the setbacks, in addition to air, light, and general safety and health. So, I mean, that's the purpose of setbacks, and I think what complicates this particular application is, again, the concern of the neighbors, which also, apparently, I would presume, based on what they're seeing, maybe they have an active HOA, there's covenants that may be stronger than even the county code, but again, you know, they would have to consider how they would want to enforce those covenants. And I think ultimately, although I'm not an attorney, but I've dealt with enough HOAs, they would have to seek some kind of legal relief in order to enforce their covenants. And whether they're willing to do that or not, I don't know, but that's their issue and not your issue. So, I think like Jeff says, all you have to rely on is what's in the ordinance, and therefore, I think the choices the staff have presented may be your only two valid options, unless the immediate neighbors are willing to come up with some other kind of modification, like a buffer, or, I don't know, you'd probably have to get a little creative, but, you know, I don't even know that a buffer of any kind would be satisfactory, because, again, if Mr. Darcy said 2,000 square feet minimum in the subdivision...
On this phase right here, there are different phases. The first phase was 1,650.
Yeah.
And there's different phases in there that have larger, smaller homes.
Yeah, and we can't get into non sequitur arguments, like, you know, Mr. Sellers' friend explained of sins of the past and/or alleged that other homes don't meet the covenants. You know, that's just nonsense. It could be fabrication, whether it's intentional or not. It's non sequitur. So, all things being equal, my opinion is, my non-legal opinion is, you know, those are the legs you have to stand on in making a decision, unless the neighbors are willing to compromise in some fashion and think of something creative collectively with Mr. Sellers.
Can I say one more thing? So, we had a discussion about this, and I talked to Rocky about, you know, not having the square footage, and he said that you know, we do that, and basically ended up, you know, I guess our attorneys will talk about it. He went ahead and had his septic system put in the backyard. So, if you're knowing that you have a problem with the front of your house, that you may have to take part of your garage, why put your septic tank in your backyard if you want to have another garage put on the backup? You just continue to work all the way up until this meeting on the house, not giving him any way out. And I think the septic system, they said it had to be 265 linear feet, and he got a really good guy to put the septic system in, and he got away with 190 linear feet of drain tile to put in. So, it's just, but he just kind of made it where he had the option to have no garage on it.
Was there a stop work order coincident to the variance application? Do you know? Either James or Patrick?
I believe, yeah, we spoke.
Yeah, I do believe we did issue one. And that would have occurred at the time of the application? And if that's the case, and if he kept working after the stop work, does that present a problem?
I don't know when the septic was put in, but yes, Rocky and I had talked, and at that point, I believe everything was done.
Yeah.
The septic tank and everything was already in place, if I recall.
All right. I was just...
April 45th?
Well, I was just trying to establish if there was any...
Can I say something real quick, sir? If you don't mind?
Sure.
Okay, I was never issued a stop work order. Nothing was ever sent to my email. I was never given a phone call that said, hey, you need to stop working until something goes forward. I didn't get any of that. And usually, you'll get an email from the building and zoning department regarding your inspections or anything like that. I got nothing. I even asked, when I spoke with them out there at the site, hey, you know, what's going to be in question is the garage, you know? The house is pretty much done. When I say done, I mean, everything is in the home. The only thing that has not been hooked up is the water from the road, because where it ties into the house, its main, is at the garage. So, I said, that's going to be in question. We don't need to do anything with that. Anything that was in question of that 40-foot setback, I didn't do anything with. Now, the placement of the septic system that Mr. Jerry brought up, that, as you know, has to go through the health department. The health department tells you where you can and cannot put your septic system, and what amount of linear drainage is acceptable and what is not, what material is acceptable and what is not, and it has to be inspected by the health department before it's covered up. Everything that was done was done properly. There was nothing, I haven't done anything with the front of that garage at all. I haven't even put the shutters on the house yet, because I didn't know what may come of it. So, I said, anything that's not in question, I haven't got a stop work order for, I might as well do, because even if it comes down, Mr. Sellers, we want you to cut your garage in half, that's not going to affect anything else on the home. And so, that's what it did. I didn't... I do not. I thought I did, but I do not, I'm sorry.
All right, we've got a motion to deny the variance. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Mr. Trimble. All those in favor? No more discussion? All those opposed? All right, and one opposition is fine. We are denying this variance at this point.
Okay, so what would be my next steps that I need to do for you?
With the county office, and to see what...
Yeah, we're filing a second variance.
Okay, listen, we're filing a second variance, unless he has... You can still appeal it to the county commissioners. You can do that, you have that right.
Okay.
But is it time enough to get it to their next meeting to appeal?
Yeah, James can answer that, I guess.
Yeah, we've done it before. It's, yeah, I think...
Yeah, yes. You have 30 days to appeal, and it's, but it would be at the next available meeting, whenever you file the appeal. So, if you file the appeal right away, it should be at the next county commissioners' meeting.
Because there's no public notice on that, I don't believe, so...
Okay.
You have a right to appeal it, but if you wish to do that, then I think I would be very speedy.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, what I'm saying, he could go ahead and file now.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't, you say there's not advertising? I thought there was.
For appeals?
We'll look at that.
Yeah, we can look at it, because it came up a couple of months ago, and we had one that just followed through, so...
All right, and this may have some time now for you to get with the other property owners too.
Right. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
This is denied at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six, Randy Allen Sims has submitted an application to rezone approximately 1.795 acres from Ag 5 to general commercial for the purpose of operating a contractor's business. Property is located at 270 Newtown Road, and Steve Rushen will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case, well, I'll just go on. This is the approximate location of the property. It is near Highway 67, just south of Interstate 16. This is the zoning map for the property. I said 67, I'm sorry, Ash Branch Church Road. Newtown Road is the access to the property. It fronts Newtown Road. The parcel that's shown is a greater parcel than what's being requested for the rezone. It's actually a smaller 1.7 acres for, asked for rezone, which was cut out of this parcel. So, you can see the area zoning is nearby Ag 5, some highway commercial at the interchange, and light industrial with conditions. If you may recall, a year and a half ago, there was a sawmill, a small-scale sawmill that requested light industrial. Newtown Road is actually a county-maintained dirt road, and when that case came up is when we began discussions with the applicant about their current use and the development there with storing dump trucks and some contractor-related equipment on the property. So, this, again, arrived, I guess, through code enforcement stemming from that rezone. This is the aerial of the property as it currently is being used. There is a pole barn shed there on the property, and then, again, contractor-type equipment is there, and the applicant did provide a letter of intent, which I think kind of explains more of what, more in detail of what they do. Area concerns would be the single-family homes nearby, in which we do recommend some conditions in the staff report. However, staff withheld a recommendation, just based on what tonight's hearing would, you know, what you may hear. The future development map would suggest that the property be suburban neighborhood, so, you know, it's not on a very high-volume street, obviously, with being a dirt road, but the general commercial rezoning is available to the property. But this is taken May 1, and this is, I believe, how it's operated for some time, no less, no more. And then, again, that's the structure that's on the property. There is some vegetative buffer, but in review of the property and the general parcel lines, according to tax assessor's map, most of that vegetation is not controlled by the applicant, that's by the neighbor, and so, that's why we recommended a vegetative buffer on those particular sides. So, with that, unless this board has questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rushing.
Mr. Rushing?
Here we are again. Thank you. Steve Rushing, once again. I am representing Mr. and Ms. Sims. This is Randy Sims. He and his father-in-law, right next to him, Rick Schuman, are the operators of this, and that's exactly what happened. They didn't realize what permits they needed, and when they were flagging for the light industrial, can you go back to the zoning page, please? When they were putting the signs up for the sawmill, that's when they saw this and started all the discussions, and so, that's what's led us to this. If you remember, earlier in this evening, we talked about a cottage industry. This seemed more than that, than the home occupation cottage industry, so I think that's why we're conferring with the county staff, that we are looking at the rezone with a conditional use instead of sticking with the Ag 5 zone and the cottage industry, just a little bit more impact. But to do so, they did get a new survey and surveyed out just the area that they're conducting this business, and it sits on now, on 1.795 acres, cut out of their home parcel, which was 14 acres, ironically enough, pretty close to the first one we talked about, this cottage industry. But they took out the part that they're using their business on, and so, this 1.795 is the subject of both the rezone that we're coming to you now and immediately after will be a conditional use. To continue to operate this business, as Mr. Pope said, it's been operating about the same way the last seven years, before they realized these permits were necessary, but they've taken all this effort with the new plat and these applications as a result thereof. You've seen the pictures of the property. It's a shelter with some construction materials, and on that picture, you saw one of the two tandem trucks that they have on it. They keep them there at night, they're usually out on a job site. Other traffic to and from this property, maybe a couple of pickup trucks and trailers for transporting their tools and materials. Most of the time during normal business hours, those bigger trucks, I'm sorry, are off-site at construction jobs, and just kept there maybe overnight. They leave out early in the morning, and they come back, they may have some excess construction materials, that's what you saw in the picture, such as some pipe or granite rock. They're stored there temporarily till they need them again. No customers come to the site, they have no waste materials on the site. It's graded with asphalt millings to allow proper drainage. After we reviewed, the county departmental review, we certainly accept how the staff has analyzed it. We have no objection to those two conditions that the staff has addressed, and though the comprehensive plan does indicate suburban neighborhood, you kind of see what the actual zoning has occurred in the area, we are seeking a general commercial zone, which is a little less impactful than you see the highway commercial that's all the way around the interchange right there, which is just a short distance. And I measured it twice, I came up with 792 feet from the corner of their property to that interchange where it says highway commercial, so not very far from a higher-intensity highway commercial zone. So, access to I-16 is close by. No other impacts are anticipated by the applicant or by the staff in their report. Again, this business has been operated the same way for several years before they were informed about this, and there've been very little impact with the neighbors during that time. It was the small sawmill that got zoned to light industrial just down the same dirt road that led to all this. So, we assert that the existing ordinances, together with the nature of the business and the conditions that have been proposed by staff, will adequately protect the nearby property owners to minimize the impacts. property owners to minimize the impacts. This will include now, uh, in the condition, a 15-foot landscape buffer along with an eight-foot tall wall fence or berm along the rear and sides. Uh, and with those protections, we respectfully request, um, that this commission adopt that and to recommend approval, uh, of this property to, of the 1.795 acres to a general commercial zone with the suggested conditions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Terry Shoup has signed up to speak.
So, my name is Terry Shoup. Uh, I'm the property that butts up to the back of their, their, uh, lay yard. I've been there. I built, I bought the property in '01, built in '03, finalized, built it, got completed in '04. Back behind me, that was a pasture where he's doing the lay yard. So, you know, first off, let me thank you all for your time. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not real good at regulations and ordinances, but when I built my house, I got a permit. When I built my 40-by-40 barn with electric, I got a permit. Okay? I'm not a business owner. I'm not real good with ordinances or regs, but I knew what to go do. They've been putting this thing together for several years. Now, they can put a buffer if they want, but the thing about the buffer is it's not going to do any good. Like the gentleman said earlier, you got, he said a couple trucks. I got a picture I took yesterday. He's got four trucks, a tractor-trailer, a backhoe. He usually has a bulldozer on it. And all those things, you got the tractor-trailer noise, you got the dump truck noise, you got the tailgate slamming on the dump trucks. You got the beepers from the, all the equipment. And like I said, you can't, you can't not hear it. And, and the best part about it is, it ain't Monday through Friday. It's Saturday mornings, it's Sunday mornings. I get up and go to work at 5:00 in the morning. Ain't a big deal. My wife, my mother-in-law lives with us. She's been living with us since '07. Last few years, my wife retired in '18 to take care of her because she's got dementia. With dementia, you got sundowners a lot of times. So, my mother-in-law's up all times of the night, my wife's up trying to take care of her. So, they can't even sleep in because of the construction, you call what you want, noise behind us that's been going on forever. Uh, I don't know if it's going to affect my property value or not, but I will say that when in '22, when I appealed the property taxes, it come back a little bit lower because that place had started being developed behind us. I don't know if that was the reason behind it, but it did get lowered. Okay? Uh, I don't know if it's going to, you know, what it's going to do to my property value. So, you know, I don't know. Like I said, she's, my mother-in-law's got dementia. She's been living with us. If, you can't sleep with the window up when it's cool because they come in at 7:00 in the morning, backing, you know, their dump trucks and slamming their gates, and it's like, it's like it's commercial area. It's not a residential area, and, and, and it ain't just Monday through Friday. It's week, it's every day. As a matter of fact, this weekend, Sunday, they was out there doing their thing. And I started to, I went and took pictures, but, but I didn't get, I didn't record it on my phone because they were gone by the time I got around to it. I was cutting grass and all that. But, you know, like I said, I did everything by the book when I built my stuff. Now, they're asking, can I have it done after they've done, done it? So, I don't think that's right. Uh, no, I don't know. I don't know what else to say, except I play by the rules, some do, some don't, and now I'm about to have to listen to this, and this eight-foot wall ain't going to stop all that beeping. Ain't going to stop the tailgates and them, uh, dump trucks slamming. Uh, so, uh, that's it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Shoup.
For right this second.
All right. Mr. Rick Schuman is asked to speak.
Uh, Rick, this is Department of Plant. He was here to, uh, answer questions. He and Randy, if you may have him.
All right. Are there any questions from Mr. Rushing or Mr. Shoup?
What would be your normal hours of operation into the yard and out of the yard?
Normally, we got, our trucks leave around 4:30, 5:00 in the morning, and they usually get home between 3:30 and 5:00 in the evening. Every now and then, we do have a load boy that moves out equipment at night because we have pavement operation, and usually, your pavement operation has to be moved at night. But he comes in, he goes out. Uh, when I started this right here, I didn't know because I was just a kid. I went over there, I cleared me a little spot, and that's where I put my stuff at. So, you know, it is what it is.
Did you live right next door?
Yes, I lived right next door. And then, the, the other neighbor, we was actually going to buy that property, but she beat me by a couple thousand dollars when we built it.
How long you been in business?
Seven years.
On Saturdays and Sundays, what you known to do?
On Saturdays, Sundays, this last Saturday, Sunday, the neighbor that's beside our lot has a bad drainage problem. So, I've been over there for the last few weekends trying to get it fixed because it's rained every, every Saturday since the beginning of the year. Anyway, so I have been working over the weekends on her property, but as far as around my house, no. When I get home, I'm tired of doing what I do every day.
Madam Chair, I was just going to ask if any response would, uh, address out of the podium because the recording, I don't think would be able to pick up some of what was being said.
Mr. Sims, is there anything else you'd like to say? We need, actually need your name for the record.
Randy Allen Sims. No, I'm good.
Are there any other questions? If not, we will entertain a motion of recommendation.
What, can I say something real quick?
Mr. Shoup, come, come back up front before recording purposes.
Yes, ma'am.
You have some time left.
So, I forgot to, I forgot to add this. If I'm not mistaken, and I could be, but if I'm not mistaken, this gentleman and this gentleman are in the business together.
That's correct.
He has lots of acreage across the street on the side towards I-16 where there's no houses, but they chose to put it right in the back of my property. They're business owners together, and they put it right behind my property as opposed to across the street where there's acres and acres, hundreds of, well, several, a couple hundred acres of farmland that he owns. Okay? If you look at his property and his map, you can see he's got a lot of property, but they put it behind my house. So, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
All right. That closes the public portion of this meeting. If there are no other questions from this commission, then we will entertain a motion of recommendation.
I was looking to prove it with the, uh, with the, uh...
Conditions? We have a, um, motion to approve with conditions. Is there a second? A second from Mr. Brandon? All right, no more discussion? Uh, all those in favor of approval? One, two, three. Those in opposition? Two, it's three to two. Three to two, we are going to recommend approval to the county commission on June the 4th, 5:30 in this room. Thank you. All right. And with that being said, this goes along with it. Randy Allen Sims has submitted an application for a contractor conditional use. The property, again, is located at 270 Newtown Road. Mr. Steve Russian, again, will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it's okay with the board, I'll, uh, skip the introduction to the property. Um, but staff, uh, does suggest one condition if approval was, uh, recommended, that, uh, any newer existing structures which would accommodate the contractor use would require an application for a new conditional use so that, obviously, if the business is trying to expand, we want to look at, uh, any potential impacts that may have. So, uh, that one special condition is can, uh, in the staff report for consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, any questions?
Is, is there any town that's on, town of operation, which is, yes?
Um...
For hours of operation?
Hours of operation.
The, Mr. Atkins, do you have, I, I don't have a, uh, the ordinance or front of me, but in the contractor special, um, supplemental standards?
Mr. Pope?
1417.
Yeah, I don't see any under 1417, A through H.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Rushing, Mr. Gray...
Well, I just made, but yeah, defer to Mr. Atkins on that. While he, he looks at that, shall I?
Come right ahead.
Uh, very shortly, we just went through. It's the same property, uh, same business on the property for which we just discussed, the, the general commercial zoning. Uh, contracting is permitted under the general, uh, commercial zone, but does require these supplemental standards that we were just looking at, at 1417, um, that you were just asking about. Those supplemental standards, we believe that we can meet every one of those. Uh, and so, as, in order to do the contracting, apparently, we need this conditional use under 1417 as well. So, we assert that all of those, uh, A through H elements set out in 1417 are met by Mr. Sims' business, uh, including exceeding the minimal distance, uh, from a residence, minimal lot size of at least one acre, uh, and absence of temporary structures. Uh, once again, the staff, uh, cover that really well. And the one condition that they made, uh, if there's any further expansion, obviously, we are, um, in agreement with that. Um, so, on behalf of the Sims, uh, once again, uh, in order to accommodate the use that they're, they're putting to the property, we would ask that it include this special exception or conditional use for just contracting. So, that's what it would be limited to. Thank you.
Uh, I concur with Mr. Rushing. There's not any hours of operation in the ordinance.
Um, can we add that as a condition?
You could, if you want to.
All right. If there's no discussion, we'll entertain, entertain a motion of recommendation. And this would be contingent on the previous item.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would move that we recommend approval of this, but I would like to, uh, well, add to the condition to specify some hours of operations in the, um, but we, gotta kind of think about how we have to do it because their op, their business is operating where they leave in the morning and they come back in the afternoon. So, I feel it would be appropriate to limit it where they're not operating on, from the weekend, more so than, than during the week.
And that may be something that they can work out with the county office before they go to the county commissioners?
Well, you could just add a condition, but I, we, it needs to be clear enough that it's, you know, understandable. Yeah, not ambiguous.
The hours of operation be limited to five to the week days?
Or is it forever? No weeks? No weekends?
No hours of operation to the day, to Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
But not, not, they're not, not limited, they're, I'm not trying to limit it to a specific hour, Monday through Friday, just...
Just Monday through Friday.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to approve with the conditions as stated, number one, and a second condition added, that hours of operation be limited to Monday through Friday. Is there a second for Mr. Lane? All those in favor? All those opposed? We have two in opposition. All right, so that's three to two. But, um, we will recommend a conditional approval to the county commissioners, June 4th, 5:30.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That's all we have.
That's all we have.
We did choose to...
All right. So, that's...
Thank you. Thank y'all, everybody.
All right, we do need to, I just keep, I was keeping mentioning, I, I thought they get the dates, and they're, take a look in August. Remember, we have Gaza coming up in August. It's going to be a really good year. So, if there's nothing else, um, for this commission, I'll entertain a motion of adjournment. Move to a second. We got a first and a second. All those in favor?
I'm saying...
All those in favor? All those in favor? This meeting is adjourned.